Okay, good evening. I called an air for our village board meeting for Monday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Please join me in a silent prayer and meditation. Okay, thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Great, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gravino.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedved.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing for two thousand and twenty-two tax levy. Is there anyone here to speak on that? See you none. I'm gonna close that. Move on to item two, public hearing for Waterford Oaks, special service area, five percent increase. Anybody here to speak on that item? See you none. I'm gonna close that public hearing. Move on to number three, Willow Lake Special Service Area, five percent increase. Anyone here to speak on that? See you none. I'll close the public hearing. Item, next item, audience comments. You might hear. See you none, consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Under new business item one, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one. Excuse me, one second. Sorry, it's my place there for a second. Item number one is regarding upgrades to our Microsoft products in our building. So currently, the village has in the budget money to replace the police file server, implement a new document management system, and upgrade our Microsoft Office products. After some research, staff determined the best solution would be to consolidate these into a single-source Microsoft cloud-based solution known as Microsoft O three sixty-five or Office three sixty-five. Currently, the village uses a combination of physical and cloud-based solutions. We do not utilize a comprehensive document management system and have to purchase our Microsoft Office products as they become available, so to speak. So right now, we're running on Office two thousand and thirteen. Just to upgrade that alone is roughly forty-three thousand dollars, I believe. We also have to replace Village Hall and Police Department file servers around every five years, respectively. Switching to Microsoft O three sixty-five would eliminate the need for physical file servers at the Village Hall and Police Department, provide enhanced security, real-time updates to software. So basically, as updates come available, as we subscribe to them, they automatically happen. They also allows us to adjust data storage and access to a comprehensive document management system that they provide through that software. Our IT manager, Dave, who's sitting next to me, has identified eighty-four initial licenses for purchase through O six, oh, three sixty-five. These would be annual purchases. To be cost efficient, I give Dave a lot of credit. What we did is we looked at a hybrid approach. So basically, they offer different tiers for each of the Microsoft licenses. What we did is looked at every workstation, so to speak, and just figured out what each employee, what workstation needs, like what type of access do they need to certain types of files? What access do they need to emails? Do they need access to a document management system? And so by doing that, we were able to price out each license individually. Staff received three quotes for those eighty-four licenses, receiving the lowest quote from Sentinel Technologies at fourteen thousand eighty-one dollars for the first year. That price, it's a one-year, so we don't know what the cost increases will be. In comparison, there's a chart in your memo, basically, that says, does a six-year cost comparison. We use six years because we buy a server every five years for the police and for the Village Hall. So basically, every five, fifth year, the sixth year starts another purchase of a server. So by doing that, and even keeping fifty thousand dollars in for uploading documents to the new document management system, by going to this solution, I believe in your, the memo, it was roughly a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars over six years. To do it the way we're doing it, by the time you implement all these systems, pay for the annual licenses and the maintenance and the upkeep, it could be as much as three hundred and eight thousand dollars. So by switching to a single-source solution and just pay an annual fee, you have access to all new, highly secure data at all times and products. So that being said, the reason it's in front of the board is the annual dollar amount through Sentinel is below my spending authority, but because we anticipate this being an ongoing purchase, our purchasing policy has me bring it to you for the initial purchase.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion.
I have a question. Do, do we, why do we continue to need servers if we're gonna be cloud-based now?
Well, I'm gonna jump to Dave, but this does replace two physical servers by putting them in the cloud. There are other servers that we have physically, David, they're.
So the servers we're looking to replace are going to be actual file servers, and so we're gonna move the files up into the cloud. So when I was writing up the comparisons, I was saying if we kept going with physical servers on-prem, it would cost like three hundred and forty thousand dollars over a six-year span. If we move to this cloud-based system, we eliminate physical servers in the building. It drops to like the a hundred and thirty thousand mark that Steve had mentioned. We do have some specific servers that have to be on-prem, like the Squad Video Servers and the like door access system and the internal like camera systems, that all has to be on-premise with physical servers right now.
And those are separate.
Those are separate, yes, yes. So this would just eliminate the file servers that we have that just house all our files, basically.
And then are we a hundred percent paperless as a village, or is there any reason why we can't be?
It definitely puts us in the right direction.
Yeah, so what it does is we've been budgeting or looking at doing a document management system for a long time, and what now we can do is a simple search through, you know, our Microsoft file, whatever it's called, I can't even think of it, your, your, your file. And then you can look through that and through the drive, and it'll search for keywords, but it won't find everything. To do a document management system is typically really expensive. It's come down in price, but this year, I think we had sixty thousand specifically to basically get a service, and then there's a hosting fee every year for that. What we're looking to do is this actually includes a very comprehensive document management system through Microsoft. Then we're actually gonna keep some of the money that we budgeted, and we're looking to use that to actually start uploading the files that we currently have digitally formatted and have a service put them into the cloud, so to speak. And then the plan is, now that it's here, some of the cost savings to put money in the budget to actually go through, hire a company to come in and actually go through file cabinets and sit down and actually scan paper stuff.
I, 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 just personally, I think that's the way to go. Every business in the country is going that way, and I think if you get a FOIA request to have to manually go through actual documents, this would, that would save so much money to find that document management system and, and be able to search it, and you can, what you could do in five minutes and probably don't need employees to carry that out, it would save the village a lot of money.
So Steve, what is the cost? Did you say it's like a hundred and thirty thousand over the, over five or six years, or what is the cost per year?
The cost per year for this is fourteen thousand eighty-one. It can go up each year, just like any service, but so could the cost for the things that we physically replace in the next five years. So this is all based on current data that we have. So how much a server costs now, how much the Microsoft product upgrade would be now? So we're comparing apples to apples by saying this is Sentinel's price now, multiplied out by six years, plus fifty thousand for trying to get some of that stuff up, implemented up in the cloud.
But it is subject, that's just a one-year fee. It's subject to whatever it's gonna go up with each year. It's not like you're locked into a contract for a certain amount of years at a certain price.
Correct.
I still think it's a very good price, but I just.
It's, it's, it's kind of funny. There's, there's, there's kind of a theme to the first couple items on the agenda. They're all kind of IT-related things tend to be ongoing. So if Dave looks at it and says, the price is, let's say Sentinel's licensing, I mean, you have to be a certified Microsoft re-licensor anyways to sell their product. So it's a limited poll of who you're going for, and he found three that are local, and this was the cheapest. If for some reason, all of a sudden, it goes from fourteen thousand to like thirty thousand a year, something like that, Dave might say, whoa, wait, hang on a second. I'm gonna look at that cost benefit we did, and maybe some of this is, maybe we don't buy as many subscriptions next year, and then we start bringing some stuff back a different way.
Is there a minimum, required minimum of licenses?
No, there's not, and we can buy one as, so as we hire an employee, we can assess what they need and buy one license for that one employee.
There's a really good chart that talks about the, the three different licenses and what they provide. And right now, there's eighty-four. It could be eighty-seven, it could be eighty-two. It really just depends. That's the number we're looking at now, but it will fluctuate depending on new hires or, or just changes in what we do.
It's actually better because you can try the subscription out. If it doesn't work out, or you don't need it, it's not as useful, then you don't have to renew it and spend the money on it the next year, so.
Absolutely.
There's the benefits there.
You're not buying a hardware and that you're stuck with.
Hold the roll, please.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item two, Steve.
Okay, item number two on the agenda is also IT-related, and this is for, we're looking to switch our mobile devices over to, our mobile phone devices, I should say, over to AT&amp;T FirstNet. Currently, the village utilizes Verizon for all of our wireless cell phones, smartphones, and tablets. AT&amp;T FirstNet is a product that basically is designed to provide first responders dedicated coverage and capacity to communicate during emergencies utilizing a private government radio band network. It basically prioritizes in areas, let's say there's a natural disaster, and there's a couple cell towers get hit, and all of a sudden, people can't text, or they can't get phone calls to go through. What it does is when they set up and they establish a network, the police, the fire, anybody who's on that list as a first responder or an emergency responder for the village gets priority. So as soon as AT&amp;T comes in, establishes a connection, we then get prioritized so we can respond during the emergency. They're the only ones that are able to do this. So what we looked, what, what we looked at was basically the cost. So the initial terms are set up through a state contract with Illinois, the state of Illinois. And as part of our research, we looked at whether to switch to unlimited data plans. We switched years ago to a limited data plan, and it has its ups and downs. You save a little bit, but sometimes you go over a little bit, so it ends up kind of being a wash. So we looked at going to an unlimited plan and whether to upgrade certain cell phones to smartphones, and the cost of our data-only devices, which are the tablets. For instance, our Public Works Department, some of them will use tablets in the field. Based on that comparison, staff determined the cost to change to an unlimited plan with AT&amp;T FirstNet was cheaper than Verizon, while also being able to upgrade our cell phones to smartphones for certain employees. However, it was found to be more cost-effective to stay with Verizon for data-only devices such as the tablets based on the, the current plans that we already have in place. So in addition, AT&amp;T is actually providing a credit of more than ten thousand dollars in our first year. So at this time, we're looking for approval to switch our mobile phone devices over to AT&amp;T FirstNet for employee cell phones. And once again, this is a, the, over the course of time, this will exceed my spending authority as we assume it'll be an ongoing annual cost.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item three, Steve.
Okay, item number three is we're looking to establish a new leads connection. So the Illinois Law Enforcement Agency Data System, known as LEEDs, is a statewide computerized system designed to provide information to criminal justice agencies. Police officers use LEEDs on a daily basis all the time. They run license plates, driver's licenses through the state database to check for warrants, violations, and safety warnings. Currently, we have a connection with the, to the state police through an outdated T-one connection through the Montgomery Police Department, which maintains that connection for us. Staff is currently looking to establish our own connection to the state police from our own police station utilizing the Illinois Century Network, which is the sole provider of the lead circuit. The cost per month increases slightly from eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars per month to approximately nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, so it goes up about fifty dollars a month. However, the new circuit connection is expected to be about twenty times faster, and would allow the village to work directly with Illinois Century Network to resolve any issues. Right now, if something went down, we would have to not only call Montgomery, I am not aware that they have a full-time IT person, so then there's that issue potentially, and then there's the, it's, the T-one is maintained by a third party, so we'd have to go through them. If something happened with this connection, now we have the ability to go directly to the host, so to speak, and work directly with our staff, Dave, to resolve the issue.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Gately. Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item four, Kevin.
So this will take a little while to talk through, but it's a pretty significant issue. I'm pitch, pinching for Mike here tonight. What we have in front of us, you know, obviously, the village has been planning to redevelopment, redevelop Block One for many years. We've also been in discussion with the Fire District over many years about the potential of moving the fire station. And these things are now kind of coming together for us with the Fire District poised to build a new station, either where they are or in a new location. In anticipation and parallel to the talks with the Fire District about these things, we have approved the acquisition of the Obergon property on the corner of Route thirty-one and Oak Street. And we have now negotiated terms of an agreement with the Fire District for the exchange of that property, together with several village parcels that would make up land for the Fire District to construct their new station in exchange for the current fire station site. This is authorized under the Illinois Local Government Property Transfer Act. And the basic requirements for that act is that each entity that seeks to acquire property from the other entity has to pass an ordinance identifying the property that they want to acquire. And then the other entity turns around and passes a resolution saying that they will transfer that property, and basically, both of us exchange an agreement that sets out the terms and conditions of the exchange. So what we're doing tonight, we have an ordinance that does two things. One, it identifies the fire station parcel. There's multiple parcels that make up the current fire station site, so we're identifying those parcels that we want to acquire. We're passing our ordinance, which begins that protocol under the Illinois Government Property Transfer Act, and we're approving the agreement that we've negotiated with the Fire District. Now, the Fire District can't identify the land that they're going to acquire from us because we don't have a legal description for it yet. It's the Obergon property, and it's two or three village parcels, and we don't know exactly what the Fire District needs. So in the agreement, we've, we've agreed to give them a chunk of property on the corner of Route thirty-one and Oak Street up to one point seven acres. And, and it's going to be up to them to determine through the process of design what they actually need. So the agreement kind of builds that flexibility in to allow them to identify exactly what it is that they need and to provide a legal description for it, at which point then they can pass their ordinance that says they want to acquire that property. The agreement also builds in a lot of other things. So for instance, they're doing their due diligence at the same time. You know, there's a number of things that are question marks. For instance, there's some power lines there. Do those need to come down? They, they want three hundred and sixty-degree access around the fire station, so how does that look? What does that configuration look like? And so on. They've got a surveyor right now that's already working on putting those things together and working with the architect who's doing the design work to come up with the exact dimensions of the lot that they need. The, the agreement is subject to a number of things. It's subject to them, obviously, identifying the property. It's subject to us acquiring the Obergon property. It's subject to us subdividing. So once they've identified exactly what they need, we will initiate the process to subdivide and consolidate the, the Fire District parcels into one lot and the village parcels into one lot. So we'll be exchanging one lot for one lot. We also need to go through the process of rezoning because right now that corner property is not zoned for governmental or Fire District use, so we'll be, we will initiate the rezoning. We may or may not initiate a special-use planned unit development. Eventually, there will be a PUD to cover all of Block One, but we obviously don't know how that's going to redevelop yet. So, you know, we, we may kind of put the, the skeleton of that in place or not, not quite sure yet. Obviously, we need to acquire title to the Obergon property, and we'll be closing on that January sixth. But we haven't closed on it yet, so that, that's a condition, and we need to comply with the Local Government Property Transfer Act. The Fire District is already going forward. They're already working on their design. They're doing their due diligence. We'll initiate the subdivision and rezoning process. Fire District's going to determine whether the power lines need to come down, how many poles need to come down. And we've agreed in, in this agreement that we've negotiated, we've agreed to cover half the cost of that, if that's what they want to do. You know, it's kind of consistent with our goals for Route thirty-one also to have those power lines come down, so that's part of what we worked out with them. They may or may not need stormwater, you know, facilities, depending on, you know, how, how it works out under the county's new ordinance. And that will be a discussion if they determine that they do need some stormwater facilities. That will then become a discussion with us in the future because we know that the redevelopment of Block One probably will require some stormwater control facilities. So that's kind of something that's up in the air. It's a bridge that we'll have to cross when we get to it. Like I said, they need three hundred and sixty-degree access around the property. They plan on expanding the current easement, not easement, that alley that's there, that runs north and south, kind of down the middle of that Block One. They would like to expand that into a more, a, a, a more, a wider access. And that, their main access will be out onto Oak Street and in onto thirty-one. They also, there's also a curb cut approximately, which will approximately be at the south end of the property that they acquire from us that currently exists on our property right now. They would like to expand that to twenty-one feet, but that will take a joint petition with us and them in front of IDOT to see if we can get that petition, so we've agreed to do that. There's no guarantee that that will be the case, but that's what they like. They've agreed to provide cross-access on, you know, both ways, onto thirty-one from their property and on the, you know, from the alley onto Oak Street for whatever development occurs on Block One. And they're, they're okay with us shutting down Monroe Street if we want to do that, so they don't need Monroe Street. They don't want Monroe Street. They've got access where they want it in, in the way that we've designed it or, or agreed to it. So we have the flexibility to close Monroe in the future if we want to. We won't take possession of the Obergon property until June or July, and that's okay with them. We built into the Obergon agreement that they can do their due diligence and come on the property and do the survey and so on in the meantime. And then, of course, when we take possession of the Obergon property, then we'll close and we'll actually have the exchange sometime in June or July. And then we won't take possession of their property until they've actually constructed a fire station, so they'll continue to operate the fire station where they're located. And then when they vacate it, then we'll take possession. We will demo, demo the Fire District building. They will demo the Obergon building. And that's basically of agreement. I think I've covered the main points.
Yeah, you did good.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion.
What would be the remote possibility that you highlight that this doesn't transpire?
So they, they have a budget based, that's tied into the referendum that was passed. And, you know, so they've, they've got a, they've got a ceiling. And the, the things that could drive this beyond their budget might be stormwater. It could be burying the power lines. We don't get the impression, I don't think, from them. I mean, I think they feel like they're gonna be able to make this work and that it's going to go forward, so I think it's much better than fifty-fifty. I mean, I would hate to put a percentage on it, but I think it, it's very likely that this is going to get done one way or the other.
Excellent.
Kevin, you have a sort of any sense of the timeframe to where we get to the point where we'd be demoing the, the fire station? Like, what is, I know that they are surveying and they're planning for the space that they need, but what would, what would it be the timeframe to get us to that point?
Yeah, so clo- closing in June or July, they'll start construction, I don't know, in the fall, maybe?
They're looking, I think their goal was to break ground as around September-ish of next year, late summer, September, by the time we close and get everything set up. And then depending on the building and the, and the power lines or the stormwater, you typically, you do a year to design, a year to build is kind of a rough guess, so in theory, fall of two thousand twenty-four would be when they would maybe occupy it.
I understand it's approximate.
Yeah, it is. We, when we did the, going through the public works facility process and, and in the past, it's always, you kind of use that year to design, year to build kind of mentality.
Yeah, that's a good. It's good parameters.
All right, call roll, please.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item five, Jason.
This item is an approval of the Messenger Public Library resolutions for its two thousand and twenty-two tax levy and maintenance tax. This was approved at the library Board Trustees at their October thirteenth meeting. This item will be used for the next, for the next item on the agenda to pass our, our tax levy, but this is accepting the, the library's request. Their total corporate levy, one million nine hundred and seven thousand, and their maintenance tax, maintenance tax, a hundred and ten thousand. So in total, their, their levy request is two million seventeen thousand, which represents a seventy-four thousand three hundred and four dollar or three point eight two request over their final two thousand and twenty-one extension.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item six, Jason.
This item is an ordinance approving the two thousand and twenty-two tax levies for both the village and the Messenger Public Library. On the village's side, our levy request is two million six hundred and ninety thousand, which is no increase over our request of last year. Although we're not asking for an increase in the, in the levy request, we do anticipate there'll be an extra twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars or approximately a one percent increase based on the value of the, the new construction EAV coming on to the tax levy. As I mentioned, the library's tax request of two million seventeen thousand. So the total levy request for both the village and library would be four million seven hundred and seven thousand for the year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item seven, Jason.
So this item is approving the tax levy request for the Waterford Oaks Special Service Area number four. So this was related to one of the public hearing items earlier tonight. We do have an increase of approximately ten thousand dollars in this levy request. The previous eighty-six hundred dollars, now we're asking for eighteen thousand six hundred. The increase relates to future replacement of retention pond piping. We anticipate this would be approximately thirty thousand dollars based on rough estimates now, so this levy, additional levy request could last about four years until we have the necessary funds to make these repairs. With this, we anticipate that each property owner would see about a twenty to thirty-dollar request, I mean, increase in their, in their tax bill related to this SSA.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item eight, Jason.
This item is approving the ordinance for the Oak Hill Special Service Area number seven. This request is ten thousand dollars for the current year, which is no increase over the previous year. Funds are being accumulated for some pond drainage improvements on this SSA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, please.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item nine, Jason.
This item is an ordinance approving the Timber Oaks Special Service Area number eight. Levvy request is seventy-five hundred dollars, which is the same as last year. These funds are used for mowing of the common areas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowery.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes, thank you. Item ten, Jason.
This item is an ordinance approving the levy for the Pine Creek Phase Three Special Service Area number nine. Levvy request, two thousand dollars, which Um, levy request, two thousand dollars, which is the same as last year. And again, these funds are used for the mowing of common areas.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll please.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Item eleven, Jason.
This item uh is the second uh of related to the uh public hearing tonight. This is the ordinance approving the levy for the Willow Lake Special Service Area number eleven. Um, this in, this levy in past years was two hundred dollars for mowing of common areas. This is now ten thousand two hundred. So when it ten thousand dollar increase, um, this increase relates to replacement of i- or in repair of the fence that goes along Randall Road. Um, currently, we have approximately thirty five thousand four hundred and forty dollars on hand. Um, dating back to the original developer contribution. And then when the the funds was built, we've gotten estimates that are in the couple hundred thousand dollar range to replace the entire fence. So we taking the approach that we will increase the levy and we'll just kind of do section by section, kind of assess which which spots of the fence are are the worst, and we'll kind of attack it that way rather than trying to get the whole thing, the multiple hundred thousand dollars at once.
Basically, um, what we're looking to do is as they, because it was hard to even get people to go out there and look at a fence that size and give us quotes. We had difficulty even getting that. And the price is we're coming back astronomical. So the plan is, as Jason said, when we say section by section, we're not literally going with section one, two, three, and four. We're looking at what's in compliance with our code, so to speak, what's in reasonable condition. And once it starts to fall out of reasonable condition, then it gets marked as a priority that that section is the priority replacement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll please.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
All right, item twelve, Jason.
And this, this item is an ordinance approving the levy for the North River Town Center Special Service Number thirty two. Um, levy request is thirty thousand dollars, which is the same as previous years. Um, this funds are used for the wetland maintenance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Go roll please.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yeah.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
All right, Jason, number thirteen.
This item is abating the tax levy uh related to the two thousand fourteen general obligation bonds. Uh, these are the bonds that were taken out of the constructed police department or the police station. Um, since these these funds were taken out uh with pledged sales tax revenue, um, it's not necessary to levy a tax for it. So therefore, we're just abating uh the village's tax request.
Second.
Discussion. Roll please.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
All right, item fourteen, Jason.
And finally, this is the ordinance abating the tax levy request on the twenty seventeen general obligation bonds. These are water bonds that have been pledged uh with water user fees rather than a tax levy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Come right please.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item fifteen, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is a resolution supporting an application for King County Community Development Funds. Um, this, this fund has been supporting our water main and um projects in the past. Um, most recently, the Chestnut, Locust and Spruce project that we have just finished designing and will be opening the bid for in the next couple of days. Um, is one example. And the next um project that we're looking at doing is also going to be in the low mod area. Um, so this funding is specifically targeted for sections of town that have low to moderate income. Um, we've been fortunate enough to get this grant when we were doing the Monroe Street Water Main project as well as that Chestnut, Locust and Spruce. But the thing that's kind of exciting about this one is that we're going to be doing that like Chestnut, Locust and Spruce. We're going to be performing the engineering um in-house for this one. And this is kind of an example of why it's really neat to have a village engineer on staff right now because the engineering costs of this project without somebody on staff would be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars estimated on the total project cost. Um, that's basically the cost. That that cost will basically fund our village engineer and our proposed construction engineer hire for the year. If you consider that design of that project's only going to take three months and the construction will take maybe two or three, you've got all that savings that you would otherwise be spending on a consulting engineering firm and you're doing it in-house. Not only that, but they're accomplishing it really quick. We don't have to wait to get in schedule in line on the consulting engineer schedule. So we're able to move a lot more nimbly for grants like this. So when we find out that the deadlines are, we found out about this grant like two weeks ago and it was, the deadline is on December seventh. We were able to put together an application, get the uh, the the application prepared, the design cost estimate established, and we're going to be able to submit this thing on time. Um, in this grant, right now, we have estimated the cost of the project to be in about one point two million dollars. The refined estimate came in about thirty thousand dollars less than that. And right now, I have in the table that the cost would roughly be split between the village at eight hundred thousand dollars and the county is forty thousand dollars. However, the way the low mod grants work is they look at the percentage of low mod people within a geographic area. So for instance, in Chestnut, Locust and Spruce, our past project, thirty five percent of that population was considered to be low moderate, low to moderate income. So what we did is we took that thirty five percent and multiplied that by the total project cost to determine what we figured the county would be willing to fund because their intent is to provide those funds to help that percentage of the population that they deem as to low and moderate. In this instance, we didn't know exactly what the percentage was. We reached out to the county and they told it was, told us it was eighty percent. So theoretically, we could be asking for eighty percent of this total project cost. At this point, staff is suggesting that we go up to like fifty percent. And the reason for that is just because the total grant funding available is only one point one million dollars by the county. And it's probably unlikely that they're going to award that all to one community typically that there's several awards. So we thought it was reasonable and conservative to ask for more than we were last time. But still, um, may being a little bit humble with our application. So in this instance, all this uh, all that was discussion or uh, I guess my uh explanation was really just to get the approval of a resolution supporting this application.
I I think one quick thing that it has to be uh pointed out is that by passing this resolution, you're essentially passing that we will fund this project. So this will go into the budget. Um, Jason will put together for the board in the spring. And then what'll end up happening is if we don't get the grant or the grant gets reduced, we can always decide not to do the project. There is one aspect of this project, the Fox River lining project, that's a waterman that crosses our river that we would do probably if we, if we don't even get the grant, we'll probably still do that in the budget anyways.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll please.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen, John.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this, the Public Works Department is seeking to purchase a new Ford F three fifty service truck. Um, the purpose of this truck is going to be just a, it's a day-to-day use truck where we're going to transport tools, equipment to and from job sites. We're going to haul trailers to mow the lawns um that we're responsible for, for, we're going to use it to transport traffic control to erect that in places it needs. And we're going to use it to drive around and pick up dead animals when they need to be picked up out of the roadway. So it's an average day-to-day service truck. Right now, we have two of these trucks in the fleet that we use on a regular basis and we're up to eight guys now. So it's getting to the point where um the the vehicles are are needed in order for these guys to get out and do the work that they need to do. Um, the purchase of this vehicle um is going to be a a little interesting. Um, in the past, we've had trouble ordering vehicles through the state purchase program. If you recall with the village engineers truck and then the water truck, we tried going through the state purchase program. It didn't quite work out. We went through a municipal aggregation program. That didn't quite work out. And in those two cases, we ended up going and negotiating a deal with um individual dealerships to get a vehicle that could be delivered on time. Um, and just kind of as an example of of the delays we're experiencing, the truck that's parked outside of Village Hall right now on the uh south side of the building is truck one sixty six. It's a five yard dump. It's got a big plow on it right now. It took eighteen months for that thing to get delivered through the um state purchase program. So things are starting to improve with those programs. We're, we're seeing that the delivery times are coming down. So in this instance, what we'd like to do is place an order through one of those aggregation programs. And then that program has the option of us being able to cancel that order at some point. So say we get six down, six months down the road and the updates are Ford's not making the vehicles or GMC's not making the vehicles. We can opt out of that. And then in that instance, we would try and go to an individual dealership at that time and try to purchase a vehicle. Um, the reason we're going through the state purchase program first is just because it's cheaper. So the the vehicle that we we chose to order is going to be about forty seven thousand dollars through the state purchase. Um, otherwise, at the vi- dealerships right now, what we're seeing is somewhere between fifty two and sixty thousand dollars. So figure it's worth a shot to try to go through this program and see if it works out and save that money a- at first. So right now, the village has um forty five thousand dollars budget for this vehicle. Um, and so we're going to be asking for two thousand more than what we have in the budget. But it's the staff recommendation right now to pursue the purchase of that vehicle through the National Auto Fleet Group, who is a member of one of these Sourcewell joint purchasing programs. And then maintain that option to to cancel that order should we see that uh the delay gets beyond six months or so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll please.
Trustee Nedved.
Yes.
Trustee Salazar.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Gately.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Uh, all right, thank you. That concludes our new business under village president report. I just want to John and Steve and uh staff, the bridge looks great. I mean, that's just a little tidbit of probably what the whole park's going to look like when it's lit up. Uh, so Saturday is our event. Hope to see everybody there. It's five to eight o'clock, tree lighting at five thirty probably, something like that. So um, well done, well done. Trustee comments.
I have a quick uh question for Steve. I've had a couple residents approach me about um looking at the possibility of having uh a discussion about chickens again uh in the village and maybe we can bring that up at a a future cow meeting for a discussion. I don't want to take too much time now, but uh I I think it's worth a discussion given the price of eggs.
Anybody else? Commissioner report.
Uh, I was going to bring up Making Spirits Bright, our five day uh program. Um, I do want to thank um Public Works who spent, this was a couple of years ago, we added some stuff in the park and 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 we kept wanting to build a little bit. But this year, we 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 took a different approach and to put that in perspective, as John says, when you have eight people and one of them is basically dedicated to maintain your fleet and one of them is dedicated to Julie Locates, which takes up probably seventy five percent or so of their time each day. You only have about six effective staffers to to do things. The leave program ends and then they immediately switch over. They have to start switching over the trucks to plow, which takes several hours per truck. And then they had to go out and they did this and they, and you know what? And they do not only a good job, but they put so much time and effort and actually um involving themselves in the process, like watching some of them get really involved with the ideas they came up with was 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 really awesome. So um, it was fun to go out there and and see the lights being tested here and there and them coming up with ideas. So we're looking forward to Saturday night.
Great. Thank you.
Permit reports. Motion adjourned.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's the same. All right, thank you. We'll be uh meeting for the committee at the hall shortly.